We can hold that one aside. I can get more information for you and we can vote at next meeting.
It says high school phys ed, but it doesn't.
I think it's 80 books. No, 80 dollars.
Eighty dollars.
It says high school office supplies, but then it says high school phys ed.
The money is being moved from the office supply line over to the phys ed line so that they can afford to make this purchase.
Okay, I misunderstood. I'm thinking of a much larger number here, the way I wrote the document. That's why I gave me pause. It's 80 dollars. Okay. The NEASK, what happens if we don't pay it?
Well, then we would not be involved in that NEASK accreditation process and...
But this is an annual fee that we pay to NEASK. It's not...
Yep.
It just strikes me that an organization that provides very little in the way of service, as far as I'm aware,
That would be correct.
and services exclusively, or almost exclusively, public schools who budget on a fiscal year ought to know to inform its constituents that the fee is going to go up in the current year in an amount of time that will give us the ability to budget for it.
That would make sense.
It just strikes me as arbitrary and capricious. Is that the word the lawyers use?
Yes. If we don't have the accreditation, will it impact our US News &amp; World Report score? That's all I care about.
Well, if we're not accredited.
That's an interesting question that I cannot give you a definitive answer for.
Will it help it if we get rid of it? No, so move on. This stinks, but I don't...
Most schools strive to be...
A big number. It's just frustrating.
Most schools strive to be accredited by NEASK. That's kind of a thing you're stuck with.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, I vented.
Any other comments or questions? I'll look for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfer as described.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. And we don't have any warrants or donations?
We have donations.
Oh, we do.
We have one in the amount of $5,316.98 from the Lunenburg PTO. These are the proceeds from the Penny Wars fundraiser. And these funds will be deposited into the gift account at the Turkey Hill. And we have another donation in the amount of $2,408.34 from the Lunenburg PTO. These are proceeds from the Scholastic Book Fair. And these will also be donated, deposited into the gift account. The funds from the Scholastic Book Fair will be earmarked for the library. And the funds from the Penny Wars fundraiser will be earmarked for a shade structure at the outside of the building that we've been trying to find a way to fund for my entire tenure here.
Mr. Scullinbrini?
You have left out a critical piece of the Penny Wars. Who won?
Is that really the most important?
Yes, that is. That is all I care about. Who won? No, I'm just kidding.
I don't have that at the tip of my... I know that that was included, though, in Mr. Yvonne's weekly email, but I can't recall off the top of my head.
I feel like also each day was a different winner, too, that they got different prizes each day.
I was updated on who won each day.
Yeah.
For the school spirit, the entire school was a winner.
We all won.
Thank you to the PTO.
Recording in progress.
Thank you to the PTO for this. This was... It's a lot of work, the Penny Wars. There was a lot of pennies collected, and they're filthy, so... Yeah, so thank you very much to the PTO for the amount of work and effort and planning that goes into both the book fair and Penny Wars.
Yes, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to accept the PTO donations in the amount of $5,316.98 and $2,408.34 with our extreme gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the PTO. Next, oh, for warrants from October 11th to November 4th totaled $427,970.30. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
This one will be fairly quick. Yesterday, we had our full-day professional development day. This was a joint conference with the North Middlesex Regional School District. And it was hosted at the high school in North Middlesex. And we will be surveying all the staff for feedback about their experience during the day. An update on the director of facilities position. We have reposted as the individual to whom we made the offer declined the position, unfortunately. A few reminders. School committee meetings next will be November 20th. That's a 6:30 meeting, hybrid from the middle high school. December 4th, 6:30, hybrid from town hall. Again, special town meeting on Tuesday, November 12th, 7:00 PM at the middle high school auditorium. Also mentioned previously, the warrant Article 2 requesting the Chapter 70 funding, I just wanted to mention, requires a two-thirds vote for approval. Report cards will be available November 12th. PACSEL meeting tomorrow evening at the middle high school at 6:00 PM. And November 14th, we will be conducting all of our family Zoom meetings to review assessment data by school. 6:00 to 6:30 will be the primary school, 6:45 to 7:15, Turkey Hill, and 7:30 to 8, the Lunenburg Middle High School. The principals will be sharing information and links for those meetings. And again, I'll remind everyone that the schools are closed on Monday, November 11th, for the Veterans Day holiday. And I would just like to express gratitude to all of the veterans in our community for their service and their sacrifice. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you. What questions or comments do the committee members have? I would ask about the facilities director. Do we just not have the funding to...
Actually, in this particular case, that was not the barrier. The candidate just wasn't 100% convinced that it was the right career move. So again, we've reposted. There are some... We have had some inquiries about the position since reposting, so we're gonna cross fingers and hope for the best.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the presentation on the Brooks House. I'll ask Mr. Scullinbrini to come forward.
I'm Anthony Scullinbrini. I live at Five Alley Road. And I can't tell you how much I enjoy making a presentation to a board that has my son on it. It is truly a parent's dream to know that he has kids who are willing to become involved in their community and serve in a public way as a volunteer. And thank you, Tony, for doing that. Okay, the Brooks House. The house is an architectural gem, even though it certainly needs some spiffing up. It's been there for 187 years. It was built by a fellow by the name of Samuel Bailey in 1837. He sold it to Fernando Brooks in 1870, and at that point, it became the Brooks Farm. Fernando lived there along with his family, and his son took over the house and along with his wife. When he died, Ida sold the property to the town. And it was then used in 1946 through 2011 for purposes related to school activity. The superintendent at one point in time was in there, and then the superintendent moved over to Passios, and then the school facilities director was there. Now, no one's there except for school furniture. We have been discussing the Brooks House as part of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee process. I participate in those discussions as a representative from the Architectural Preservation District. Not a formal member of the committee, but in the two years, two and a half years we've been involved in looking at different options for town hall, for the Ritter Memorial Building, and along with other facilities. The Brooks House has always kind of fallen to the bottom of the list in terms of places where the committee feels that the town should spend money. And I don't think that that's in a reasonable position for the committee to take, given the fact that the town has many needs and not enough funding to pay for those needs. So at the Architectural Preservation District Commission, we've been evaluating, how can we move this project forward with preservation of the house in mind? And we decided that what we would do is ask the select board to formally task itself and the staff for preparing a report that would then go before the town at special, at Angel Town Meeting in May. And then eventually create a process whereby the facility could either be sold or a long-term lease. Obviously, there's lots of people that have interests in what will happen at the Brooks House. And while the article specifically mentions the school committee, because you are on the tax records listed as a co-owner of the Brooks House, the town owns the property as the owner, you obviously have an interest in what's going to happen to the building. But I think even more critical would be the library, because we specifically talk about using the library parking lot for access to a commercial facility that might be created through this article. And I have spoken to both the library director, and today we had a conference call with them, with the chair and the vice chair of the Board of Trustees for the library, and explained why we're moving this forward. We listened to their concerns. And, you know, I think we had a successful engagement, because they expressed to us concerns about parking, about access. And, you know, I said, I've been in the business of community development for many years, and I can tell you that this project will not move forward unless we have the support of the Board of Trustees for the library. I mean, libraries are sacred institutions in the communities where they are. And, you know, so whatever we come up with is certainly going to be something that the library is going to support, you know, or this won't move forward. So the article is six parts. You know, it basically says, let's create a lot. And I know, Peter, you had mentioned, and maybe it was Dave Passios who had mentioned at the Finance Committee about a couple weeks ago, about whether there was, you know, an actual boundary line for the property known as the Brooks House. And as best I can tell, no one knows the answer to that question yet. I have spoken with Chris Riley, the New Land Use Director, and he's working to find if there really is a survey that says, you know, this is where the property for the Brooks House is. The one thing that we and the Architectural Preservation District Commission, you know, want to support is that we use the tools that we have available in the bylaws of this town. Namely, the Architectural Preservation District Bylaw, which is why we're bringing this issue forward. And then the Planning Board and the Village District Bylaw, which says, here's how you create more density and create more commercial activity in the Village District, which, oh, by the way, matches perfectly the Architectural Preservation District. And of course, the Brooks House is within the boundaries of this matched Village slash Architectural Preservation District. You know, so what we want to do is that we want, you know, like, it would be ideal to create, we believe, a lot that's fairly compact, that doesn't extend into school property that much, that, you know, doesn't infringe on the property of the library, but still can be something that's viably commercial to someone to take a look at. You know, so that's like kind of at the top of the list. Let's figure out, is there actually a boundary survey for the Brooks House? And if there is, let's work from there to come up with something that's in line with the Village District Bylaws. Now, the other thing that the Village District Bylaws also talk about is parking. And it has a reduced requirement. The Village District Bylaws has the zoning requirements under, associated with the Village District, has a reduced requirement for parking. It allows for shared parking. It encourages that, which actually makes sense, because we have a fairly compact downtown or town center. And the last thing we want to do is insist on businesses having these massive parking lots when you might be able to share parking. Now, in the case of someone who owns a private building, you know, like the building where Bad Larry's at, I mean, that property owner would certainly have an interest, a financial interest in sharing their parking. But in the case of the Brooks House, if we would release some of the parking from the library, it's not something that's going to cost the town money. Now, you know, there's ways of doing parking and adding parking to that area. And I know that that's a sensitive issue for the library Board of Trustees. And I can assure you that we are going to move forward with this project only if we can come up with something that works for the library itself. I think they're more of a relevant party than the school committee is. You know, I think that they have far more at stake in how this is developed, you know, given the proximity of the library to the Brooks House. One of the things that they did mention, which does impact the schools, is that they say, hey, you know, at the end of the school day, we have this rush of kids, you know, that come into the library. And we don't want to create a traffic situation where some of those kids might be at risk. We don't either, you know? That's not something that we want to see happen. We also know that, you know, kids are at the Boys and Girls Club, and they successfully operate out of the, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, and they cross the street to go to those little storts across the street. You know, so we can work that as well. And I think that those are all things that are very manageable. I have heard from members of the Planning Board, and I've heard from members of the community, that they don't want to see the property sold. And there's ways of creating long-term leases that don't require the property to be sold. You know, where we would still create some sort of protection to the town that if this didn't work out, that the property could come back to the town. I mean, there's ways of doing that. I've seen that. I've seen that when I was working for the Air Force. You know, we gave an entity rights to property at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base on a long-term lease, with the understanding he was going to build a hotel that would support our PDY travelers to Wright-Patterson. And that one, you know, that was the first in the Air Force that ever happened. This was something that took place in the early 80s. And I can tell you that the Hope Hotel is still in business at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. There hasn't been any serious crimes or any serious problems associated with the fact that that Hope Hotel sits on leased property from the federal government. And I think we could do the same thing here. I think ideally, selling the property would probably have better financial implications for a private property developer. You know, I think they would probably prefer to go that route, but that's something that we would have to look at. So this is really kind of a first step forward. A town meeting in the spring is when this report would be due. And then we would bring to the table, hopefully, supporters like the school committee, like the library board, and move something that could then create better value for the town, other than a building that's sitting there doing nothing except falling apart. And we, in the Architectural Preservation District Commission, as well as the Historical Commission, see that as a last resort. You know, let's figure out a way to move forward, to get something done, so that this house gets saved. And at the same time, you know, we can see the town benefit from having something there. The library could use some activity next to it. You know, in fact, I was looking at their meeting minutes from the most recent meeting that they had. And they noticed that there was a downturn in some of their... They didn't have as many people come into the library. And they blamed it on the fact that the farmer's market didn't work very well this year. And, you know, so this is a way to bring people to them, too, you know? So I hope that we can figure out ways to satisfy their concerns about parking, about access, and then create something of value for them, as well as the town as a whole. Any questions for me?
Committee members? Mr. Beardmore?
So to clarify the question that I asked, I don't believe that the Brooks House has its own meets and bounds. I think it's part of that continuous 55-acre property that we control as part of the school department. But I would like somebody to do a title search and say definitively, these are the meets and bounds, and this is actually the legal situation that the property is in. Because my understanding is that the school department, prior to my tenure and probably everybody else here, turned the building back over to the town, but there's no property, there's no ground associated with that transaction. And my understanding is that it's a, we're in a similar ambiguous situation in terms of the property line up and around on the backside of the library relating to Kids' Kingdom and the Eagle House. So I would very much like to understand exactly where our authority begins and ends relative to that property.
I've asked those questions. I've asked Carter Terenzini to give me an answer on that. He has not yet. I know he's been busy preparing for special time meeting. And he's interim. He's only working part-time. But I also spoke to our New Land Use Director, Chris Riley. And that's the task that he has taken on, to look at, to see if there is truly a meets and bounds, you know, definitive description of that property. You know, when did it come? What did it consist of? You know, have there been any changes? You know, were there any particular issues associated with that? I do think that what we would end up with, regardless of what the history shows with regards to a lot survey, is that I think that we would probably want to make that site as compact as it could be in compliance with Village District zoning requirements. You know, the Village District zoning requirements, which were passed, I think, in 2015, were designed to create a denser commercial district, to bring more businesses into Lunenburg. And I think that's actually a great thing for the town. And it kind of lines up with a lot of the comments that have come out of the master planning requirements and the surveys and the conversations that they've had in public meetings. People want more things to do in downtown Lunenburg. And I think this is one of the ways for us to do that.
In principle, I agree with you, Mr. Scullinbrini. Here's a, just to dig a little bit more into it, and I do take some issue with your statement in terms of relative interests between the library and the schools. That property abuts the entrance to our middle high school. In fact, the westernmost lane of that entrance used to be the parking lot of the Brooks House before the library was put there and that parking space was reconfigured. And we are not resolved yet into our future needs and where our elementary school in particular is going to sit long-term. So issues like parking for a potential replacement of TC Passios Elementary School, if you can imagine such a thing, are all going to come into the mix here. It seems like a big space, but it isn't when you consider that there are playing fields directly across from it, and there's a, you know, there's a, what was a functioning school right behind it. And so I think that, as I said at the Finance Committee meeting, in principle, I support this. I would very much like to see this issue resolved once and for all. But I just, I think that there are a lot of very strong interests that are in very close proximity to that building. And therein lies the challenge.
I don't disagree with you, Peter. I mean, I think that, but we also have to remember there are multiple entrances into school property that are flanked on the left side or the right side by private property. You know, so I think that, you know, once again, if we end up with a commercial facility at that location, you know, it has to be something that fits with the plan for the schools. It has to be something that fits with the plan for the library. This article is to formally engage parties so that we can bring up a report back to the town in the spring of 2025. And I think that it's not a foregone conclusion. What we've said is that we want to begin with the end in mind. And that is, the building is going to be preserved, it's going to have value, and it's not going to cost the town money. That's what this is. We're beginning with that end in mind. Now, we might get to the point where we say, we can't have that, you know, it's not feasible. But I think that we have an obligation to start that. And I think that's why this town has an Architectural Preservation District Commission, just like this town has a school committee. Is that these are things that are important to the town. And if they weren't important, you know, then we wouldn't have an Architectural Preservation District Bylaw, and we wouldn't have a Village District Bylaw. Time for us to, you know, to engage in these things.
Can I ask, Scullinbrini, a general question to anybody? My dad, anybody in the committee? Without a meets and bounds, how will you secure, how will you guys secure title insurance?
That's what we would end up with, though.
Okay.
Yeah. We want to see if there's one to begin with.
Got it.
And then, and I don't believe that that would, like, what, if there's a historical document that says, you know, there's 150-foot of frontage on Mass Avenue, and it goes back 350 feet or 500 feet, I think that what we would do is to say, how big does this lot need to be? It's the beginning of a start, you know, of a point where we would come up with a different... I don't want to give town property away. I don't think anybody in the Architectural Preservation District Commission wants to give property away, because we do have an interest at that location. But I think that we can do both. I think we can create a lot here that would satisfy the town's needs. The town has approved to sell this building, but it has to be moved. That's already, that's, I was past a town meeting, I guess, several years ago. That's not going to happen, because there's no lots available close by. The money that you would spend would far exceed the value of the house to any particular private developer or a private home builder. This is a way to kind of keep it in place, protect the town's interests, and maybe create something that has value.
Any other questions, Ms. Prozowski?
I don't, I don't think you're going to find a clear division, because that lot, the library, that house existed before any of the buildings around it. I think it's always been, I think it's always been one parcel, and I know we went through this at town meeting several years ago when we tried to convey the Brooks House and accidentally...
Almost conveyed 55 acres to go.
Almost conveyed all 55 acres, right before the vote that was discovered. And I am a little irritated that we still, as a town, haven't done the work to figure out where the boundaries are to subdivide things better.
We're going to do that now.
Yeah.
I'm here to tell you, Laura. We're going to do that now.
Even just subdivide the properties so we could better manage the properties within the larger lot, that would be great.
Yeah.
So we had talked about relocating district offices, and we had floated the Brooks House as a possible, I mean, it's not a good plan, but as a possible location, because TC Passios is becoming unusable. And we had floated that as one of the possibilities. And I think we had asked for a report on that. Should we move up the timeline on options for district offices? I know we don't have a facilities director, which makes this difficult. But I would heap for Mr. Scullinbrini's committee to do all this work, and then for us to turn around and say, never mind, we want the Brooks House for our offices.
I would be happy to take any of you inside the Brooks House.
Is it...
Have you been in?
You don't want it.
Oh.
So from...
We vacated it.
Is it not an option?
You can't.
We vacated it several years ago.
Oh, I know we left it. It's just, okay, so that's a good reason.
And from my Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee meetings, having the superintendent there, she did not express interest in having her office in...
So that's not an option.
I think it presents the challenge that it's really not enough space for us to move all of the offices. And again, the ACE program. Not so much any of the other programs, but that, the ACE program, because it has to be co-located with our special ed office.
So that's an option that's just off the table?
And I think if we were going to do it, there's accessibility challenges with the building itself. It would need a lot of work.
And money that we don't have.
And I think if we wanted to have all of the offices there, you might be talking about an addition to that building in order to be able to...
My understanding is you would either need to commit to only using the first floor, or you'd have to add an elevator to use the second floor. So in order to get enough space to accommodate everybody, you'd probably have to spend more than the building is worth to make it work. And if you have the special education people also there, I mean, we would not want to have...
And all the same reasons with parking and everything else.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was off the table.
Okay.
So that Mr. Scullinbrini's committee was not putting in a ton of work to do this. And then we turned around in the spring and said, actually, we'd really like to use it. So I just wanted to make sure that was not going to be a concern.
From my understanding, the town's getting ready to hire an architect to look at working on the Ritter Building to put the school facilities, other school people over there to the Ritter Building. I mean, that contract, the RFP was open last week, the proposals were open today, you know? So that train is moving very quickly. And the end result is that we're going to, the town is going to hire an architect that is going to... is going to design space in the Ritter Building for the school superintendent and her staff. That, your understanding too?
Yes, that is from the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design.
Yeah, so like, the Brooks House is, I mean, that's one of the reasons why we're moving this forward, is because we know that's not an option.
Yeah. Long-term, the Brooks House does not make sense for the school.
For the schools.
Long-term is the...
I'm just making sure. I don't want to...
If it actually goes through, it would be the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design with the Ritter Building as all the offices, town and schools.
Oh, I know. I just, I'm not sure that's going to happen before TC Passios becomes uninhabitable.
Yeah.
And I think that we need to make sure our people have offices that are safe and sound.
Any other questions, comments?
I just have a comment, and it's probably putting the cart way before the horse. With the amount of small businesses that have gone in and out of the building across the street from there on the corner, do they think that someone will want that building? Because we have all kinds of small businesses. We had a nice little food establishment for takeout food that was at the corner there for a while. We had the Dragonfly Cafe there that was there for a while, then they left. I mean, is that viable for a space for somebody to want? I guess is my question.
I don't know, Carol. And I think that's part of what this process will flush out. You know, I think that the town center is a very interesting place for commercial activity. And I think that the more that we can do to encourage that by making facilities available, the more likely that we're going to see things for people to do in, you know, the town center. What's interesting for me is that I've noticed that, who's filled out survey number three from the master planning process?
I filled out one of them.
Okay. Go, open up.
I filled out the last one, because I'm on the master plan committee, and we were not told it was there.
Oh, is there another one?
Yeah, it just was posted October 24th.
We haven't had a meeting since last...
That's a shame, Carol, because, you know, as an engineer, I think that the best project starts with a good plan. And what's really interesting for me is to see, and like I said, go fill out survey number three, which was just posted on the town, town website on October 24th, because it talks about the Brooks House.
That's when I found out.
Yeah, it talks about the Brooks House. You know, and it's kind of like, yeah, this is, we're one step ahead of that planning process. And I think that, you know, that's, it's a shame that the master planning process has kind of gotten bogged down. Because if we had a viable plan, you know, for the town, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't need a Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. We would know what the next step is for town buildings. It would help guide the school committee as well. And I think that those are things that are missing, because the last time the town did an update to the plan was 14 years ago, you know? And everyone grouses about having to spend money on an unfunded mandate from the state. That should be one of the first things that the town wants to spend money on, because then you have a plan to work from. And I think that, you know, that's a critical piece for a town that doesn't have a lot of resources. Okay, any other questions? And then I have one comment to make.
Any other questions, comments?
I want to thank you, Mr. Scullumbrini, for putting in the article for a special town meeting, also collaborating with all the different boards and committees, especially the library trustees. I have a similar opinion as Mr. Beardmore about the boundary lines, about the Brooks House. My assumption would be that the Brooks House was donated and the entire property was donated, and it was just one big piece. And then they carved off a piece for the library and did the plot lines for that, and they didn't do anything else. And I think the assumption is going to be, you're going to have to make that compact property line for the Brooks House.
Which is good.
Again, that's just my opinion. That was all I had. Thank you.
Can I make a comment? I'm outside, this is actually a public comment, but I want to go home. I was recently involved in NIESC, an NIESC audit for accreditation purposes, and I can tell you that NIESC is worth the money the town has to spend on, from my perspective. We were a private school, and NIESC, you know, accredited its private schools as well as public schools. And it was a really good process for the board that I was on, for the private institution that I was, you know, supporting, NIESC was worth the money. So with that, thank you very much for allowing me to come make the presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night, son.
Next item, yes?
One other thought.
Superintendent.
Mrs. Oshinbo.
Yes.
If the master planning committee would like, we can send a link out to the survey to all of our staff and families.
I will contact those people. We were asked about a meeting tomorrow night, and then I never heard anything else about it. And so I will contact those people and see if we can, you know, because what happened is the chair has changed. The chair had to leave, and for whatever reason, it didn't.
Well, I know at one point, when the work first started, we did share out...
I'm sure they would want you to share that out.
And they did get a lot of response when we shared it out.
When we shared it out. So I will contact Tim, who's now the chair, and get the information.
Thank you. All right, next item in the agenda is new business. So you have action items. First is facilities and grounds report.
So you have the monthly facilities and grounds report. There's information here. The Turkey Hill ADA study bid was awarded to CSS Architect, Inc. We thought that this firm had significant experience, 44 years of experience as a mass-based firm, and all of the reference checks were very good. They also had experience with 15 school MSBA accelerated repair projects. And the president of this group will serve as the project manager for the study. You also have an update relative to the Turkey Hill and primary school security systems capital project, as well as the Turkey Hill exterior door replacement and the Turkey Hill fire alarm project. These are going to be going out as a combined bid. They'll be posted tomorrow at the central register, and we'll do pre-bid walkthroughs like we did with the ADA study. Bids will be due November 26th for any sub-bids, and the general bids will be due December 3rd. Expected date of completion for the entire project, assuming that available funds will support the entire project completion, we're targeting August 15th. Additionally, we just wanted to provide you an update relative to staffing. We're making some headway with staffing for our custodial positions that were open. Obviously, I already addressed the director position, that's posted again. We currently have three grounds and maintenance filled, and we have almost all of our custodial positions in each of our schools filled as well. We currently have a full-time evening custodial position posted for the primary school. And the part-time district custodial position has been reassigned, and has been for some period of time now, over to the middle high school to support that building.
Any questions or comments about the facilities and grounds report?
I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Gilson for taking over the bids and assigning the bids and sending those out and writing everything. That was, it's a lot of work in addition to her regular duties. So thank you to her for taking this on.
And everybody did get a copy of the, that particular bid in your packet.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? So this is an action item.
Just to accept the report.
Motion to accept the facilities and grounds report of November 6.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is an action item on the ARPA request updated capital plan.
All right. So there are a few different documents that are all part and parcel of this conversation. I included in your packets the updated versions of the capital plan that the committee approved. The documents that are in your packet for this evening's meeting are the documents that were presented that evening to the capital plan committee. I think it's helpful in the context of the ARPA request conversation. Last evening, I did attend the select board meeting, and under communication from other boards and committees, did share this ARPA potential project list with the chair of the select board and the interim town manager. And I advised them that this committee would be taking up some conversation about potential ARPA projects, and that you all may have other thoughts, and there might be additional information that I could take back to them. What we put here on this list really comes after having conversations with the interim town manager about the kinds of projects that we need to be considering, we globally, the town, needs to be considering at this late stage, because all of these funds need to be not only committed, but contracted by the end of the calendar year. And the challenge becomes, you know, the concern that when you put things out to bid, bids can potentially be contested. That in itself takes another 45 days. So the town manager's not really looking to consider anything that would be construction required bidding. He would really prefer to be looking at projects that could be taken right off of the state bid list, where you could place your order and expend the money. So when we considered those types of things, we looked at the capital plan, and there were several projects in FY '26 and FY '27 that would fit the bill for that parameter. Additionally, there are a couple of other things, although I don't know that ultimately they'll fit the bill for the town manager. The 911 compliance upgrades for all of our phones. In the Turkey Hill Elementary, there are not currently phones in every classroom. But to be compliant with all of the 911 laws, there does need to be a phone. However...
So after the 911 cabling?
No, all had to happen first.
Okay.
So when the company came in to give us their quote, we have PA speakers in every single classroom. They intended to utilize the existing cabling for the PA boxes in every single classroom for the phone lines. But when they actually came out to dig in a little bit deeper and start to prep for this project, they decided that that was not going to be satisfactory, and therefore we were going to have to cable the whole building to the tune of $59,920 above what we had budgeted for the 911 compliance in that building. As this was a compliance issue, I did not want to delay any further, so we moved ahead. But please understand, $59,920 was not in our budget for this project. So if there's a way for any ARPA money to be allocated to offset that cost, that would be fantastic. We did include the generator at the primary school. We did include the pickup truck with the plow and got a quote to the town manager for that. Additionally, the window film for either the primary school or the middle school, and I did add the primary school into the memo, it had been inadvertently left off. Those projects could be done without bidding. The mini-split project phase two in the capital plan, we included that the quote to get the rest of those classrooms done tied into the building management system, connecting the mini-splits that we installed this past summer, connected to the building management system, was going to be 483. We did submit this project as a green communities grant project, but the green communities grant, if we get it, will cover about half of that cost. So we put this project on this list for consideration for some funding. The Turkey Hill Elementary School door replacement included building out a vestibule at that main entrance. The engineers have looked at all of it, and by their cost estimates, they believe that the money allocated will cover the door replacement, but not the vestibule build-out, that that would be potentially another almost $82,000. So that, again, that, those, that collective bid, as I mentioned in the report, is going to be posted by the end of this week. So this may or may not be viable, because we will award the bid before the deadline. The fire alarm, initially, we were looking to replace old component parts, and the engineers have deemed that that is not viable, that we have to upgrade to code the entire system. And that means the voice alarm, which means cabling for all of this as well, and this will be approximately another $100,000 over what we had allocated for the fire alarm project. So these, again, these projects potentially could be good to go. It's a matter of, you know, money is allocated, we pick up the phone and place an order the next day, and we're good.
If December 3rd for general bids due, would we have it under contract? I mean, that's, it's so close.
It would be close, but I think that there's potential that we could get that done.
If we don't get ARPA funds for that, where's the money coming from?
We built into the bid that we have the right to reject all bids if we deem that it is in the best interest of the district. And if we don't have enough money for the entire project, we would deem that it would not be in the best interests of the district to award the bid.
Okay, so then, so this one, the fire alarm one, I think we might want to advocate heavily for?
So currently, the fire alarm system is all working.
Is all what?
It's all functioning.
Okay.
At the moment.
But it's just not up to code?
Correct. And if we weren't going to touch it, it wouldn't have to be up to code because of the age of the building.
Nothing in that building is up to code.
Oh, I know. Okay.
That's...
Okay. So I mean, again, the system is functioning.
It's just that December 3rd date that's going to scare the select board.
Yep.
But if we're putting it out to bid anyways...
Which we are.
And, I mean, who doesn't love fire safety and kids? It's a, it's a good ask.
What other questions or comments does the committee members have? Ms. Oshinbo?
Yeah. I think, I'm just going to go quick through what I think you should do. The cabling project is all done, so I think that's a good one, because they know that if that fits, if you're allowed to backfill it.
Correct, and that might be the question.
And that's a question.
Yes.
You know, so I think that, that's a quick thing. The generator, I think, is a real good thing, because that could possibly save the town a lot of money if it gets cold enough and the pipes break.
Did the generator costs change?
Yep.
Because...
It's updated quote, it says.
I thought it was under $100,000.
Yep, so that, you might remember that when I said that, that was a quote that I had gotten over the phone. Since that time, Dr. Gilson has actually had somebody out and walked the site to get another quote.
$172,000 for a generator. So would that generator power the entire school?
Just keep stuff from freezing.
It would keep the heating.
It's the kitchen and the heat for the building. So it wouldn't, in an emergency, it wouldn't enable the school to be in emergency shelter? It wouldn't power the schools so we could still have school in the event of a power outage? It would just save?
So as far as I know, the Turkey Hill Elementary is the current emergency shelter. And I don't believe that the generator at that building powers the entire building. It's probably some emergency lighting, cafeteria, kitchen.
Okay.
And heat.
I'm just wondering if we can also sell it as a community resource if there's an emergency and we don't have power for?
Yep. It could be a warming center for sure. The challenge with it being an emergency shelter is there are no showers in that facility.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because $172,000 is a lot of money. I can't imagine that we have $172,000 worth of food there.
Ah, you would be surprised, wouldn't you?
It's a lot, that's, that's a lot.
So what is the, what is the ask of this committee relative to this action item?
I don't think that there is a specific ask at this point. It's more a situation that, as they're coming down to the deadline, if you will, if all of the prior committed funds are not expended, we certainly don't want to have to return money.
No, I understand.
Especially where we have so much need in the community. And that's why, you know, at one point about a month ago, I think, the Interim Town Manager noticed that we had a truck on the Capitol Plan and asked us to get an updated quote that would carry us through the end of December so that, you know, he would have some viable options that he could move on quickly if there were funds remaining to be expended. So in that vein, honestly, at varying price points here, there's a list of items that...
It's a nice menu.
Right.
Pick what you want and take what, because there's going to be
Right.
A significant amount of money on the table and I think we have some good options here.
And they may deem that there are other ways that they can better utilize the ARPA money, and that's fine. Again, this is, this is a list of potential things that they could choose if they had funds that they needed to expend quickly.
So could I make a, just a procedural suggestion here? Because I think that there are two separate discussions here that we're having as one. One is relative to what our opinions might be or whatever direction we might offer to you relative to ARPA. The second discussion is capital items because there's a substantial change in our capital request that I think does need to be acknowledged by the school committee. And in either fashion, I don't, you know, we're not, the Select Board isn't here tonight to resolve ARPA and the Capitol Planning Committee isn't here tonight to resolve the Capitol Plan, but I think that we do need to address those items separately, even though some of the items, you know, sit on both sides of that street and it's all listed in the agenda. So I just want to offer that. My personal view here is that, and I say this as our rep to the Capitol Planning Committee and as the Chair of the Capitol Planning Committee, we have a list of requests for the current year and a list of requests for out-years that vastly exceed our average Capitol Plan spending for the last several years. And the delta is not getting smaller between what you would project as what we will have for capital, available capital, and what our needs are and what our requests are. And so in my mind, what I would strongly recommend is, number one, fill the gaps associated with existing approved capital items that have already been approved by town meeting, if it is all possible and I recognize some of the risks associated with the bidding and contract process. But relative to safety doors and vestibules and fire alarms and those kinds of things, in my mind, my top priority would be not having to complicate matters over the course of the next couple of years by having to go back and get more money, old money getting stale from previously approved capital, you know, capital, like it just, it gets into an extremely messy business that complicates a very messy business to begin with. So that would be number one. Number two is any of the items that are on here relative to capital for the school department. But number three would be any item that's also part of a capital request because anything that you can X off the request list for capital items is an item that falls off the list and a school department item would theoretically move up in its place if it were downstream. So that's how I think about this, but, you know, again, this is to the discretion of the Select Board and they got a lot of requests coming in from a lot of different places.
Is there any project on here you would like us to advocate for or is you're fine with just offering a menu and what the Select Board would like to select is fine? Or is there anything that you think that we should be advocating for?
I think one of our priorities is trying to fill the gap, that almost $60,000 for the cabling to be 911 compliant. It may not fit the bill for ARPA funding, however.
So that one's already completed?
Yep.
Right? And if I, I watched the meeting, well, doing other stuff, so I think they want things that were already completed may not be eligible?
Correct.
So I have concerns about that. But we can see.
I was going to say that I agree with Peter that the stuff that has started and had to stop because we didn't have enough funding under the Capitol Plan, like that vestibule, that vestibule has got to get built. I mean, this is a major safety concern. And to me, that would be something that would clean up the Capitol Plan mess and get this safety done. But I think the nice thing about a laundry list of things is you may find that there is a spot where you need something for just about this amount of money. It gives more flexibility to the Select Board and the town manager trying to figure out how to get this money spent quickly. And if all of this can be done very quickly, I think we just present all of that and say, "Have at it."
So I have one other thought here that is not on your list, and I think it's been communicated to the Select Board and the town manager, but perhaps not. But I did share with you from a conversation we had on Friday. And this, this came out of a conversation that I had with Mr. Jeffries last week. As we get closer and closer and closer to December 30th, WB Mason becomes a much more attractive place to go. And what if we filled up every supply closet in our buildings with copy paper and printer ink and dry erase and whatever else? Because those are all things that we tend to underfund and we just moved money tonight from a supply line to cover, you know, an unexpected expense. And what if we took that off the table for a few years and just bought a whole bunch of paper and dry erase?
Because if we don't do the generator and the pipes burst, there's a lot of paper.
Well, I think if you're, if you're looking to fill the last $100,000, the last $1,000, that could be some good averages.
$10,000 buys a lot of paper.
$10,000 left over and they don't know what to do with it.
If they have an amount left.
We could certainly spend whatever is available, as I'm sure most...
You and Dr. Gilson can get it spent in a very quick hurry.
We absolutely can.
So that might be an additional random supply.
I know that Mr. Jeffries also spoke with me on Friday, actually after he had been at a meeting, at the high school meeting with administrators and teachers and the Director of Teaching and Learning, relative to civics projects because he wanted to be supportive of the different projects that the kids might want to take a look at this year. And he did ask them their thoughts on if there was money available, what sorts of things. And I know that they mentioned the cost of transportation for field trips is getting to the place where it is prohibitive. So he also suggested that perhaps some monies might be allocated for transportation for those types of things.
I am, I am disappointed that we're not going to be able to get under contract in time to start the design for the playground and the driveway because the money is coming from Marshall Park, which was supposed to go in part for an inclusive playground for kids. And it's frustrating that we can't get that under bid, under contract in time.
Quickly enough, right.
That, I think, would have been a really appropriate use of some of the funds that were being returned. So there's no way we can do that in time or they're just not interested in taking the risk because it's too...
I think it's a risk issue.
Okay.
Because if there are any issues with the bid that cause it to fall outside of the timeline, then that's money lost, so...
Then I would ask that...
Bids often aren't the exact dollar amount. We saw that with the Building Design Committee recently.
Capital planning, kind of keep that in mind when it comes time for things, if things get knocked off our list, that that was, that it's still our number one priorities, our top priorities, and that is something that the students of Lunenburg need, is a safe and inclusive playground.
Again, I would just add, that is, those requests are on the Capitol Plan request for this year. There are also a lot of other things on our Capitol Plan list that can be bought off of a contract tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., like police cars and, you know, a whole other, you know, lot of things that we could potentially buy as a town that, Brian served on the Capitol Planning Committee every year.
It's the same thing, yeah.
You know, when the police request two cruisers, I can tell you, like, items number one, two, three, and four are usually two of those, you know, any combination thereof are those two cruisers. Of course, they're public safety items, they're critically important, they get high priority. If we can knock those off and buy them with ARPA funds, why wouldn't we do that?
All right, I think we've covered this topic pretty well. Is there any other discussion?
Thank you for putting this together, this menu of options.
Do we need to make a motion since?
This is an action item, but I don't know if Dr. Burnham, if you need him?
I would, I would just, you know...
Accept the report.
And just indicate a level of agreement that there's not something else that you would want me to put before the Interim Town Manager instead of these items here. Not to worry.
I think Mr. Beardmore, I don't know if you want to make a motion to add the supplies as an option?
Yeah, I would offer that we ask to add a addendum that we would be more than happy to take any amount of money and apply it to our supplies budget, or a supply purchase, I should say.
And that we are very capable of spending it
We can spend it quickly.
Quickly. Quick as they need or a good resource for that.
So back to my procedural point, if we could close out ARPA and then have a conversation about Capitol Plan, I do think that there's an important item that we just need to hit there.
Okay, so let's do ARPA and then we'll do Capitol Plan.
So second Peter's motion?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. Moving on, let's discuss Capitol Planning and see if we need an action item for that as well.
So the point that I wanted to raise on this is that delta relative to the generator?
Right.
Which is a substantial difference
Right.
To the tune of about 60% or so from the amount that we discussed when we did our prioritization list. And, you know, I understand what got us to that point, but it came as a surprise to me and all of the other members of the Capitol Planning Committee that that was a write-in change when it was presented to us a couple of weeks ago. And the obvious question that another member asked was, "Well, does the school committee want to take another look at the prioritization list?" Because you've got, I believe, number four on your priorities list is this $174,000 generator. And I said, "Well, I can't speak for the school committee, but I think it's worth a discussion." So I'm, I'm raising that question.
Any members, questions, comments?
Are there any other schools which don't have a generator?
No.
Okay. Why does our second newest?
I'm going to say that the priority is the priority and that the number went up and if they don't want to fund it with the up number, then they're not going to fund it with the up number. I mean, it's not like we could switch it for the other number and get something a little less because we can't. And the, the insurance of knowing that the building can be heated in a prolonged, it's not like we never have prolonged power outages around here.
Especially on that property.
Right, right.
I think, I would, sorry, I would agree with Ms. Archibald. I think we set the priorities based off of the need, not the price. My first thought was football field, like, it's going to be like a million dollars, but it's going to fall where it's going to fall. It's not based off of the price. It's based off of the need.
I disagree. I think, I definitely considered the price when making my recommendations to a degree because the, what was likely to be funded and what was going to fall above the line and what had the most bang for our buck. I don't, looking at the list, I don't think it changes my prioritization, but in the future, if there were huge changes in numbers like that, I think it would have been nice to have been notified prior to the Capitol Planning presentation. No, I definitely considered the price.
As did I, but I'm...
Mrs. Scullum, ready?
I did not consider the price. I also think that whenever we do presentations like this, whenever we do presentations for the town, wherever we talk about costs at special town meeting or annual town meeting, I always figure that there's like a 10% or 15% increase because the town moves so slowly and inflation is so high. So like, the fact that this came in that much higher is a mild surprise, but not like a giant surprise. We just stink at spending money. So like, we say we're going to spend money, then we waste a bunch of time, things go up, and it's like, "Oh, wow, I'm surprised." I'm just done being surprised. I mean, the first thing I did on school committee was write a letter about the air condition for primary school. And we budgeted an amount because the town did the same thing when that building was built that we're doing now. They hemmed and hawed, they wasted time, and they think that wasting time is free. But every time we do that, we cost ourselves more money. And so I would not want to change it, and I don't think that the amount that it's over is a great thing, but I don't know how we would have been able to predict that. So like, it's more than the 10% or 15%, I always budget in my head, but like, we should, you know, it's something that we need to do. It's also important to recognize that, like, even with all of the nebulous conversation that will take 20 years to figure out what we're going to do with Turkey Hill, the plan is either way to keep that building as something that's functional, and if we don't do basic maintenance like this, we're going to be in another TC Passio situation. So I think for those three reasons, the fact that we always stink at spending money, the fact that it's something that's essential and the fact that we're going to continue to use the building, I would say keep it where it is.
It's a generator for the primary.
It's the primary school.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So thank you for the discussion, members, the members' discussion. Based off of your feedback, it sounds like there's no action needed, that we want to keep our list the same, unless there's any other, unless there's any motions.
I'm good.
All right, we will continue then. Next item in the agenda is special town meeting warrant articles. So I had put this on the agenda to see if we wanted to vote to support any of the articles, specifically the ones with the school-related items.
Motion to support Article 2. I don't know if we need to discuss it much.
Well, it was submitted in our class. Well, look for a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so open up the discussion. This was one of the main reasons why I wanted to put it on the agenda, was to have us vote for it so we could state that at the special time meeting.
I was wondering about that.
Any other discussion? All right, motion to recommend approval, Article 2. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. There was potential for a vote on, trying to find the right, Article 10, request the select board for the Brooks House. So I can read that article if, if needed, and we can see if there's a motion, but it was Article 10 regarding the Brooks House, which is.
What page is that?
On school property and based off of tonight.
You got to get through the gigantic zoning bylaw.
13. What page is that on, Brian?
I'm trying to find that. Article 10.
I got it, it's on page 21.
21, yeah, yeah. I'm not going to, yeah.
Too far.
Read the whole thing. But to see if the town will vote to request the select board to prepare a report and present the same to the 2025 annual town meeting to that would have the intent of a sale or long-term lease of the Brooks House situated on 1033 Mass Ave.
Are we meeting again before town?
No, it's Tuesday.
Oh, next week?
The finance committee deferred and the select board recommended approval.
I recommend, I would move that we recommend approval of that article.
I'll second that. Oh, do you want to second that?
We have a second? Is there any discussion?
I mean, despite all of the reservations that I articulated relative to this, I think that this is the right path to go down, at least to give this a thorough look and plan.
I agree. I think it's.
Move to action.
It's preparations, not necessarily action.
I think it'll be done carefully and with the stakeholders in mind, so.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, the motion is to recommend approval of Article 10. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Were there any other articles for discussion or recommendation?
No.
All right, seeing none, we will move on.
I will, just so you guys know, I will not be able to attend Tuesday night.
Okay.
I often make my decision based on your comments, maybe sometimes for.
I can, I can give you the whole rundown.
Okay, okay, just send me an email, yes, no, yes.
The next two are going to take that long?
Hopefully not.
Yeah, I think let's keep going. All right, next item on the agenda is the secretary negotiation rep appointment. So I'll open it up to.
Yeah, the secretaries are requesting to enter into bargaining, so we would just need to determine the bargaining team.
Is there any interest from the members?
When does it start?
It can start as soon as we have a team.
So I would normally want to do it, but with the budget task force ending at the end of the year, and then in the first half of the calendar year in 2025, I have a, at least a two-week-long homicide and maybe an equally long attempted homicide trial.
What time do they meet?
We can schedule that at a time that, that works.
I could likely be available. Not coaching in the winter, so.
Tuesdays are my good day, so. They were proposing a meeting dates of Tuesday.
This contract expires at the end of this fiscal?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not available for this one, unfortunately.
Ms. Ashenbo?
If other people are available and wish to do it, that is fine with me, but I can, Tuesdays aren't really good for me, but I, I can, you know, make it work if need be.
And just, you know.
I did it the last time.
In the past.
It was just one of us.
Just one.
Yeah, because it's not a very big group.
Oh, I can't do it myself.
Come on.
No.
We could do it together, I, I wouldn't mind that, too. A good learning experience for both of us.
Yeah, I don't, because Tuesday, Tuesdays are actually the best day.
And then if only one of us can make it, then we'll figure it out.
Tuesdays are the best day.
Laura and Brian.
Second.
Any discussion?
That was very fast.
All in favor for Laura and Brian to represent the school committee on the secretary negotiation rep appointment. Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is the 2025 municipal cybersecurity awareness grant program.
This is a grant that we did apply for last year, and we would like to apply again.
Actually, I'm sorry, can we go back? The dates that they proposed have already passed. This is from October 15th.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll make new dates.
They'll miss new dates.
I just feel bad that we.
We just appointed members.
I know.
We didn't agree to a schedule.
I just feel bad that we missed the.
So going back to cybersecurity awareness grant program.
Again, this will fund some training for, for staff around cybersecurity.
What is the action that you're looking for?
Just approval for us to pursue the grant.
Motion to approve pursuing the grant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, old business action item, LEA contract ratification.
I am going to step out of this one.
All righty.
And then we also have the interim town manager as well here, as he will be participating in the vote.
I'm going to come take.
Doesn't matter, you'll be.
Come on up, I'll take Peter's seat.
I would say come on down, like on a pizza.
Bob Barker, right? If I could only have a run as good as his.
All right, so I'll turn it over to the negotiation team, if you want to add anything.
This is my first time doing it on management side, and it was really different, and I learned a lot from Dr. Burnham, and I learned a lot from Carol. I also learned a lot from the LEA negotiation team. I think that there are things that could be done to make it more efficient and quicker, but I think ultimately we got where we needed to be. I also think that it is hopefully the first step in a multi-step process to get our teachers compensated in a way that we can't match what they give us, but at least gets closer to matching what they give us. I also think that, this might be controversial, but I really thought that the silent observers added a lot to the process. There were times when people on the negotiation team on both sides did not know specific things, and having the subject matter experts there to weigh in with everybody's assent gave us a lot of perspective, especially in like really complex areas that are not strictly school-related. I don't know anything about schools, so I really don't know anything about school nurses. So like, that was one place where I felt like there was a lot of value added by having the silent observers. And I think that everyone came ready to work. And even if we didn't get a ton of stuff done quickly, we at least established a rapport and a level of trust that made it possible to get a bunch of stuff done at the very end, which is always the way it is. Like, it always happens that way. I think that the union should be grateful for the leadership team that they have. They have a really good leadership team here that's prepared and capable and not unreasonable, which I think is a pretty good deal.
I can't top that. That's, it was, it, I learned a fair amount, to be perfectly honest as well, and I've done this many, many times. This was a deep dive, and the need to pull up salaries in this community on the town side and on the school side is huge, as much as I said I wouldn't say town side and school side anymore. People are not compensated the way they should be, and we did the best we could.
Can we highlight a few of the, the contract components?
Sure. If I could just go off the top of the head. One of the things that we had talked about was holding a position for people that went on, on leave for new children, and I think this is like a perfect example of how you can find common ground for both management and for the teachers. So the teachers wanted to have a longer period in which they weren't being paid, but their position or equivalent would be held open. And so one of the things that we were able to do is to make that work, and it happened that while this was going on, while we were doing negotiations, we saw sort of a revolving door of people leaving, and at the same time, we had to account for the normal absences that happen when, you know, people go out. And, you know, it, one of the things that was really helpful is Dr. Burnham explained that like, oftentimes, and I didn't know this, like, again, I, I know nothing about what it is to be a teacher, but oftentimes it's more difficult to have the kids have like three subs over one year than it would be to have one sub, and it's more difficult on the teachers, and it's more difficult on the administration to do that. And so like, that was a place where I think that once everybody sat down and looked at it, we realized that like, oh, this is, this works out for both people. Like, I, one of the things I was really operating under when we did the negotiations was the fact that like, my job, before I went into private practice, I was a public defender, and they couldn't pay us a lot. Like, I made very, very, very little money, especially when I was new. But what they did do was they made it possible for us to stay out longer than you would expect for the birth or adoption of a child, and that made me feel a lot of loyalty to my employer so that I stayed probably longer than I should have. And the hope is that that sort of consensus building where it actually works out for both sides is something that we can keep as our model on solving problems. That, that's like a, a non-money thing. The money things, I think, are, you know, more, more, it's always the last thing, it's always the most contentious thing, but the money things were things that we worked on a lot, and I think that, and just, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but once the override came through, it made it clear to me that the town wants to value education more highly than it has. And so the override gave us a little bit of breathing room so we could get the contract done. And when I said not unreasonable, I hope everybody understood that was a joke. Mary's in the audience. I, I, I think they were really good. They were very reasonable.
Thank you. Ms. Ashenbo?
Did you want?
I think for the public's sake.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were looking for.
Thank you.
So the collective bargaining agreement will be in effect from this past July 1, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. And, I mean, there was some housekeeping things like renumbering and that kind of stuff. We did increase in the event of a death of a spouse or a child, we increased that to 10 bereavement days granted of the close relatives. We increased to two additional, it's one day was granted, but then we said two additional days granted by the superintendent if the travel is in excess of 120 miles, so that there would be more flexibility and of course, you know, can always be looked at. Tony hit on the parental leave, that the parental leave would be for either the birthing parent or the other parent, that's probably not the correct legal term, but that's what I'm using, or for adoptive parents if the child is not of school age, because obviously if the child you're adopting is of school age, you can go to school while they're at school. So, so we had a, an increase in that, that they can use some of their accrued time, and then the rest of that time would be, could be up to a year's leave, and it's very clearly spelled out when that leave can be taken. Let's see, the sick bank membership in the sick bank is mandatory, and upon accrual of the required days, members automatically will, excuse me, donate their days, but they can also draw from. Let's see, sorry.
Do it again.
I'll keep going. I'm trying to think of what else is high points.
Ms. Stifens?
The high points would be that the COLA established is 2.5% for the first year, 4% for the second year, 3.5% for the third year, and that applies to the salary schedule as well as to the athletic and extracurricular salary schedule. And there was, I'm not seeing it, but somewhere in, oh, here it is. If you have completed 30 years of continuous service to the Lunenburg Public Schools, there will be a longevity payment added to the base salary and paid regularly at the rate of 4%. We want to thank people for their loyal teacher school. Teachers upon retirement from the district will, after a minimum of 20 years of service, and those who have accumulated 100 sick days could have a one-time payment up to $8,500 based on a daily amount of $85 per day for a maximum of 100 days. And there are stipulations about when that has to be requested so that we can properly plan in the next year's budget for that. Anything else that I should throw in here? I think those are the highlights.
Thank you.
I think.
Ms. Brzezinski, do you have any questions or comments?
I wanted to say thank you to the negotiating team. You guys worked very hard, and thank you to the teachers. You guys worked very hard and continue to work very hard, and I am very happy that this is done. We're going to have a contract.
And we really tried to work towards teacher retention, that we, we tried to show our staff that we appreciate what they do and we want them to stay with Lunenburg Public Schools, even though, even with this rate increase, they're still among the lower paid in the area. But they're not as, they haven't fallen, fallen as far behind as they would have, and as Tony said, we're hoping this is the beginning of a multi-contract boost-up.
Thanks. Carter, do you have any questions or comments?
I've reviewed the document and do not have any questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, thank you to both, both teams for the negotiations and getting creative outside the money and trying to make it so people want to stay here in Lunenburg and continue to teach here and be career teachers here. I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Do we need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve the contract with the LEA.
Second, Carol.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we're going to do a roll call vote.
All right. Mr. Terenzini?
Aye.
Mrs. Brzezinski?
Aye.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Aye.
Mr. Skolnbrini?
Aye.
And Mr. Leighton.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening, rest your evening, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, open down.
You didn't go that far.
I have a point of information.
About the contract?
Nope. I did receive a message from Dr. Gilson that that generator does the whole building.
Does what?
The entire building.
Oh, okay, well, then that, that's good to know.
That's actually, that's, that is good to know.
It's a pretty good deal, then.
Can we put that in the?
Yes.
I want to say marketing materials, but it's not, you know.
Yep.
All right, next item on the agenda is the school committee goals. So you have that in your folder.
Were there any changes to those?
There was any changes, we were just giving it some time. We had made changes at the last meeting.
Separate folder, that's why, I'm trying to find it. Where is it?
Separate folder, yeah.
It's in its own folder.
All right, so goal one is financial sustainability and efficiency. The objective to ensure the long-term financial stability of the district by developing a budget that balances sustainability, competitive compensation, and efficient resource management. Collaboration with key stakeholders will be prioritized to maximize resources and efficiency. Collaboration with key stakeholders will be prioritized to maximize resources and efficiency. Action steps, work collaboratively with staff, unions through collective bargaining administration, administrators, parents, students, and community members, as well as talent partners, including the select board, finance committee, and town manager, to create a fiscally responsible budget that supports sustainability and long-term planning. Collaborate with the budget task force committee to establish and communicate long-term financial goals for the district. Prioritize competitive salaries to attract and retain talented staff members. Maintain transparency by engaging in open discussions with stakeholders to balance educational needs with fiscal realities. Review and revise fees, including but not limited to facility rental, student activities and athletics. Benchmarks, passage of a budget that reflects sustainable, sustainability and long-term planning goals. Regular updates and reports on the district's financial status and progress towards improving efficiency and cost effectiveness. Goal number two, facilities and capital planning. Objective, develop a comprehensive plan that focuses on the maintenance as well as future needs of the school buildings and athletic fields, ensuring safety and sustainability through capital planning, budgeting, policy development, and potential long-term project proposals that may involve long-term borrowing. Action steps, develop a long-term facilities plan that addresses the district's needs with special attention given to school administration offices, Turkey Hill, and the turf field. Collaborate with town officials and the community to ensure that planned projects and upgrades are, are well documented and presented at public forums such as town meetings. Establish a long-term plan for all district buildings, outlining timelines and budget estimates for repairs, upgrades, and sustainability improvements. Benchmarks, completion and, and public presentation of a detailed long-term facilities plan. Public documentation and acknowledgement of facility projects and upgrades through official town records or meetings. Goal three, transparent, efficient, and effective communication. Objective, to improve communication by reviewing and revising policies and/or protocols that enhance transparency, effective, efficiency, and effectiveness between the school committee, superintendent, and the public. Action steps, policy and protocol review, workshop and revise communication policies and/or protocols focusing on increasing efficiency, reducing misinformation, and fostering transparency. Benchmarks, successful implementation of the new communication policies and/or protocols. Any questions, comments, discussion?
No, I think those are well polished.
I agree. I'll look for a motion, then.
Motion to accept the school committee goal one, two, and three as our school committee goals for the year.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's goals.
They are largely the same, um, as the last meeting. I did, was it in the goal? I, I did add the, uh, plans for, um, moving from DCP.
Any discussion?
I think we've talked them enough, we need to get to work.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
Already in progress.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, they are already in progress. I like that.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is action item, strategy for continuous improvement.
And again, this is, uh, largely the same as, uh, what was discussed last time.
Any discussion on strategy for continuous improvement? Look for a motion, then.
I move to approve the strategies for continuous improvement as proposed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item on the agenda is reports. Uh, we'll just go down the line, Ms. Brzezowski?
Uh, oh, boy, um, that was fast. Okay, give me one second.
Yeah, take your time.
Okay, the Turkey Hill Elementary Schools School Advisory Committee met on 10/28. Uh, the rewiring at that point was mostly done for the 911 compliance, and I guess it is now done, which is very exciting. Uh, they reviewed the school improvement plan and went over the MCAS score specific to Turkey Hill Elementary School. And on November 14th, there will be an MCAS meeting, Zoom meeting, to go over the results. Uh, 6:15 will be the Turkey Hill Elementary School, 5:45 the primary, and it will be recorded later for parents to review. Um, and Leaf met, I forgot to write down the date. Leaf met last week as well, where they reviewed bylaws and reviewed the upcoming website. Yeah.
Capital planning committee met, um, twice since we last met, but most recently on Monday night, where we heard presentations from the IT department, the, uh, fire department, and the DPW. We have, uh, completed hearing our, uh, request presentations and will be meeting, uh, next Wednesday remotely to discuss our evaluation process and timing. Uh, and then again in early December to finalize our, um, priorities list and then, um, submit those to the town manager by our deadline, which is effectively the end of the calendar year. Uh, and we, uh, will also during our next, uh, meeting, uh, discuss what our approach will be in terms of evaluating and reporting, uh, the, the longer-term requests out to probably a, a five-year period. Um, and as I indicated, uh, earlier in the discussion around capital planning, there are a lot of big-ticket items on that list that, uh, greatly exceed our financial resources. Um, the town manager screening committee, uh, will be meeting on the 18th to review applications with our, um, consultants who, uh, have been doing recruiting on our behalf. Uh, and then we will be meeting in the second week of December on two concurrent nights, uh, to actually conduct interviews. Uh, and, um, all three of those meetings, uh, will be, uh, pretty much entirely executive session meetings. Uh, we'll open it off, of course, in public and then immediately move to executive session. Uh, the purpose of that is effectively to protect the identity of the applicants. Um, the interviews are done confidentially until such a point as we, um, um, advance an applicant or applicants to the, uh, select board for consideration. Uh, so hopefully, our work will be done in mid-December.
Oh.
Hopefully.
That's fast.
Yeah, speak for yourself.
It's faster than I expected.
FinCon met on the 24th of October. There is a, a new member, Tanya Dahl. There are still two vacancies, so if you wish to get involved in your community, FinCon is a great place to learn. Um, they gave a municipal bill, they said there would be a municipal building update at the special town meeting where the plan will be reviewed. The park said that the new design group led them to a $14 million estimate. So they don't have sufficient funds for phase one. They will not move forward with the article regarding borrowing. Uh, Mr. Minad talked about the difficulty there is for all of us to get accurate estimates. No matter what it is, we're trying to do. It, it seems like you think you, you have the bid and then you come back and it's like twice as much money. Um, they reviewed all the warrant articles, the ones that I felt, um, had a great deal to do with us. Uh, they approved five votes to none to recommend the $31,000 in Article II. Article III, we had a late school copier bill or something, so there, they approved, recommended approval there unanimously. Um, I think Article V has something to do with us as it has something to do with everybody, because that is the prudent investor article. So that funds could be, particular funds, under certain circumstances, can be invested in much higher yield ways, so that will help all of us. And that was approved four to zero to one abstention. Um, the Article X, they talked about tonight, about the, um, Brooks House. Um, they voted no financial impact. Uh, Jean is going to be the school liaison, Jean Russell. And their next meeting will be in the beginning of December. Of course, there will be a special town meeting, but it will be the beginning of December before they meet as a group again. The PTO, they have all this, I went, um, it was Monday night. They made $95 on shrieks and creaks, but they said that wasn't the point of it. The point of it was fun, and it was fun. So, um, Lunenburg gear will ship out this week or the beginning of next week. They were able to sell 170 items total, but what they made is not available yet. The sophomores are also gonna do a gear sale, but they very nicely delayed it. Thank you very much. So that the PTO could get theirs taken care of first. And theirs will have a Blue Knight logo rather than the straight Lunenburg, um, that the PTO sells. They are doing a December movie night, day, morning, December 21st at 10:00 a.m. in Lemonster. They're gonna show the Sonic Three movie. Uh, they will open those sales soon. They are capping it at 500 seats. Um, and they will send out a flyer about that, and they will send out an email and all that jazz. Uh, they also have a fundraiser at launch on March 20th and another fundraiser in, um, collaboration with the elementary school to go to the Worcester railers. And that will be on the 28th of February, as some of our students will be singing the national anthem.
Awesome. Which grade?
Sweet.
Um, I think Mr. Ballister said, according to what, um, this is third-hand.
Yep.
Um, fourth and fifth.
Well, I guess we're going.
I guess you're going. If they want to.
Loud. All of their fundraiser events are loud.
Yes, they are. Well, children.
We'll see if they can get like a chamber music thing on.
Yeah.
Just an observation.
I'll, I'll bring that up at the next meeting.
I'll wait till the dance.
He even said they were loud. Um, the special someone dance is on the 1st of February. That's probably also loud. I never attended, I wouldn't know they'd do that when my kids were young, so I missed that one. Um, they made $11,000 at that last year.
Oh, my God.
So that, even if it's loud, it's worth it.
Yeah.
Um, they put out requests for funding, they got 11 responses. Um, they are willing to do $5,000 per school. And, um, they got, 50% of the responses was from the elementary school, 20% from the middle high school, 20% from the primary school. It didn't add up. I looked at, I looked at Mr. McGrath who was sitting next to us, and we couldn't figure it out either, so I apologize, I've got some percentage off. Um, but the principals have to approve that the items requested are not in the budget. So they will find out, um, there's a Zoom meeting on December 2nd for those who have applied, and the week after they will be notified. Okay, if people don't ask for funds, then they will keep them. Like, they're not just gonna give them to the schools. So if any teachers are listening and wish to request funds, do so. There was a lot of discussion, it was interesting, because their discussion somewhat parallels ours on expensive field trips, like DC, like, um, the, the, um, trips abroad. And they had some ideas about getting donations from the community, from people who don't have kids, but, but could we set up some kind of foundation? They were just chatting, they're, they're not planning anything. But it, you know, some ideas, because some people in the community who have $1,400, that they wouldn't mind donating to a child to go to DC or money to go towards a, another trip. Um, they, they were concerned that there's, there's a lack of equity in these programs, but also that these programs are very worthwhile. And their next meeting is December 2nd. And I told them I was filling in because Tony is busy.
Um, the budget task force met on Monday, and we had a discussion with Brian LeFond, is that his name, the head of the assessor board?
LeFond.
And the town assessor. Um, we were basically examining the idea for a split tax rate. Um, it got a little ranty, it was probably my fault. But basically, what we ended up coming to was, the concern that the town has is that the split tax rate would have a really high impact on businesses and a really low impact on citizens. And the bigger issue is, the split tax rate would be the same for the largest corporation in human history as it would be for the guy that owns a garage with one assistant. And it was just, there's no way, under the current tax scheme allowed, based on what they told us, that there was no way, under the current tax scheme allowed by the state, to change that. Um, I asked multiple times and multiple ways about exemptions and abatements that we could apply, if we could have, uh, abatements and exemptions, you know, exam, for small businesses examined by one group, and abatements and, uh, exemptions for large corporations viewed by another group. Uh, apparently no, that is possible. So the reality is, uh, we are, um, essentially letting big corporations take the town's money, just not what we can do about it. So it was a very depressing discussion. There was some hope that Evan's plan would work, and he had done all the math, but both the assessor board and the town assessor seemed pretty adamant in their opposition to a split tax rate. I still have not given up hope that it would work, but I don't think we'll get there.
So my only advice to add on top, on to, onto that is, maybe next time Rep. Scarsdale, Rep. Gushmerik, and Senator Cronin are here, maybe that's something we can discuss, too.
I wish somebody, I, I just like, I had no idea that there was so little that we could do.
State law limits?
Yeah, just stinks.
Any, anything else from you, Anthony?
That's it.
All right. Uh, the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee has been meeting regularly, Mondays, uh, first and third Mondays. Um, the most recent one, we went over the RFP. Uh, we had one proposal that was submitted, one, another proposal that was submitted late, uh, which doesn't count. Uh, they gave out three tours over two dates, um, to the companies that were interested. We went over the scoring, um, for the RFP. Uh, the, the company was Taylor &amp; Burns, um, out of Boston. They had done some similar projects, we went through some of the projects that they've done before in the past. We, we rated them advantageous, um, and it's gonna continue, so we'll have, uh, we'll gather interview questions. We're actually gonna meet out of cycle on the 14th, and then we'll be doing interview, an interview, uh, potentially on the 18th. It did come out, uh, after the fact that it was actually $40,000 underbid, so that was, uh, good news. Um, the finance appointing, uh, committee met and we approved Ms. Tanya Dahl, as Ms. Ashenbo said, as the, uh, the newest member. So we haven't met yet, again, to, uh, appoint new people, but again, there's openings, so, finance committee. All right, that's all I have. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. So I'll put up the public comment from the public.
Sign this one.
Sign someone, okay.
Uh, yes, Mr. Beardmore.
Let me sign my name first.
You got public comment?
Yeah.
I was just gonna do it for the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I didn't know if I was going out of order or something.
Okay.
Any public comment from the public? All right, public comment from the committee?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Beardmore?
Do you know how difficult it's been for me to not comment on the teacher contract for the last six months?
Are you allowed to comment on it now?
Uh, I think I am. Um, but I, it's, it's not really a direct comment. Um, yesterday, a woman that I went to Lunenburg High School with, she was a year behind me, posted a picture on Facebook of her "I voted" sticker. And above it, she posted "My responsibility, my privilege, my vote", with an American flag. And then under that, it said, "Thank you, Mr. Lamoth, Mom and Dad, for teaching me these things." I've mentioned Mr. Lamoth in these meetings many times, and, and I don't think anybody in this room knew him. Um, but I knew him very well, he was my... You did, I'm sorry, of course you did. Of course you did. Um, I apologize, Carol.
I apologize, Carol. You probably knew him better than I did.
No, I don't think so. You probably.
Mr. Lamoth was my sophomore civics teacher, and junior year was my honors US history teacher. And is, and I say this as somebody whose mother served on this committee, my service on this committee probably has more to do with Mr. Lamoth than it does my parents.
The mother next to your side.
It's just, it's just, and she knows this as well, but my, my point for bringing this up is that, and I, I've made this point many, many times before here, and I'm just going to keep making it, because Mr. Lamoth had a, an enormous impact on my life, as did Mrs. Brockelman and, and, and many, many dozens of other teachers in Lunenburg in the, in the 70s and 80s and early 90s. And they make up who I am today, or a very large part of who I am today. And you take that and you multiply that by 1,500 odd students that we have in our schools today, and that just carries forward, right? And it might not be in the way of service on a school committee, or, or joining the military, or, or any other conventional public service, but the examples that, that our teachers set for us are, are everlasting. Mr. Lamoth was the head of the Democratic Party in Lunenburg, and when he retired, he was a select board member for a few years. In fact, he died in office. And, and we are so privileged that those traditions continue, and we are so well-served by our teachers. And I'm, I'm really proud of my fellow members and for our, our faculty for coming to an agreement and finding a way forward to, to continue to serve our students so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the committee? All right, next item on the agenda is topics for future discussion. Anyone see anything on the agenda? That we haven't discussed already?
When are we getting a budget update for next year's budget? Are we?
We don't do that until January.
All right. Can I make a motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn at 8:35.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Great job, bud.